Meeting of the Board of Education for Gaston County Schools. Starting from my left, I would like for the board members to introduce themselves.
Doc Cherry, at-large member.
Kevin Collier, Riverbend Township.
Jeff Rams, at-large membership.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Catherine Roberts, Dallas Township.
Mark Upchurch, Cheerful Township.
Chris Howe, South Point Township.
Lee Edmund, Gastonia Township.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business will be to adopt the agenda. This will be an action item and I will need that put in the form of a motion. Mr. Collier?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
I have a motion to adopt the agenda. Do I have a second? Have a second for Ms. Cherry. Any discussion? All in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is school improvement plans. This is an information item and I would like to ask Ms. Matson to come forward.
Good evening Chairman Lutz, Vice Chairman Ramsey, Board of Education Members, and Superintendent Booker. I'm very happy to come and speak to you tonight about our school improvement plans. As you are aware, in the 2014 year, we developed our strategic plan for the district by speaking to a variety of different stakeholders. We noted that this plan had to be aligned to the state plan. This is a graphic that illustrates our vision, mission, goals, beliefs, and the four Cs of Gaston County Schools. The strategic plan is effective from 2014 to 2019. Our school's school improvement plans last for two-year periods of time. Right now, the schools are on their second round of school improvement plans for our 2014-2019 strategic plan. All of the plans must align to our district and state plans. Each of the team members had to vote for their peers. So if you're a teacher, you vote for a teacher. If you're a teacher assistant, you're voting for a teacher assistant to serve on your school improvement team. Professional development was provided individually to each school this summer to help the schools develop appropriate plans driven by data. Also, we reviewed the district's mission, vision, and beliefs so they would be incorporated in the plans. We had a team that reviewed the plans. They were checked for making sure that the data was actually measurable, that it aligned to the state's strategic goals, that it aligned to the Gaston County strategic goals, that they integrated the Title I plan, that it helped us prepare for our SACs accreditation coming up in the 17, 18 school year. Each of the schools had SMART goals. And within these goals, we had in our plans, action steps for their plans, the implementation team that would make sure that the plan was taken into effect, what type of data they would collect to measure the effectiveness of their plan, a monitoring schedule, a compliance statement, and the professional development plan for each goal. As you are aware, we always try to incorporate professional development whenever we're using something else within Gaston County Schools. The plans were reviewed and approved by a collaboration through three divisions in Gaston County Schools: Academics Department, Leadership Development, and Administration. We have a rigorous schedule developed through June of 2017 where we have a variety of points where we have to measure. We will have mid-year conferences to see how the schools are doing, and we'll have a year-end closeout. We have also developed a school for the second year of the school improvement plans, and that goes through June of 2018. I've brought with me this evening our notebooks. With all the school improvement plans in them, I will leave them with Ms. Stevens for your review at your convenience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Mr. Upchurch?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to say thank you to all those involved, the administrators, the teachers, the sit teams, and I guess they're made up of parents and the stakeholders out there. And this has just not developed overnight either, and so just to say thank you to all those people out there. Is there one plan at a school that...or each school is individualized, I guess?
Each school is individualized. What they did is review the data that they had, and they would look and see where the school maybe needed to have some improvement, and that was the...what area they wanted to try to develop.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Howe?
I think Ms. Cherry.
Oh.
I just wanted to mention for our stakeholders that the individual plans are on each site. For those of us that wouldn't want to go and read and doesn't have access to that wonderful notebook, that they are on the individual sites.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cherry, for answering my question. That was my question is...
You're welcome.
I'd have to come up here after 5 o'clock and sit and read those, and I'm not sure if the superintendent wants to stay after his regular 9 o'clock hour. So those are on each individual school's website that you can see their plan?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And it's in the same detail that's in that notebook?
Absolutely correct.
Very well. Thank you.
Ms. Matson, thank you very much. We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
And if anyone has any questions after they go to the website or take the notebook and read it, Ms. Matson will be more glad to answer any questions. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is professional growth goals for administrators. This is an information item, and I would like to recognize Dr. Matson.
This year, we have aligned the professional goals of all principals and all assistant principals with the school improvement work that's being done at each site. Every administrator has selected two school improvement goals and one goal from the Teacher Working Conditions Survey to develop their own professional development plan this year. This means that for the first time ever in our county, our administrators will be responsible for working on prioritized areas that our teachers have identified that need improvement. We believe that this will communicate a strong message to our teachers that we value our teachers, we appreciate our teachers, and more importantly, we are committed to addressing their concerns.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Howe?
Dr. Matson? No, you're fine. I was a latecomer to the question thing. I'm assuming because the principals, the administrators made their own gathering information, kind of evaluated and made their own improvement plan. Was there a standard matrix by which you gave them that said, hey, kind of fit what they say is in need of improvement into this matrix? And there are checkmarks that...would that be balanced by the superintendent? Would that be balanced by you? Will it be balanced by the peers that submitted that? Or is it just kind of a...at the end, it's a collaboration of all?
There is a rubric for evaluating, but as Ms. Matson explained, these were the SMART goals that were developed by the school improvement teams, and it is a part of the school improvement plan as well as a SMART goal from the Teacher Working Conditions Survey. And they have measurable outcomes for each of those professional development goals.
How many of those...because you said it was from the teachers and the work...how much of that, what they express as an area of needs improvement, is out of the hands of the administrator? So I'm assuming if the ceiling's fallen into the room, that might be out of the hands of the administrator? Was there any of that that the board maybe needs to be made aware of that we might be able to help push that if a teacher identifies that as, you know, this is a major issue in our school, and the administrator agrees, but it's outside of what he's capable or she's capable of fixing?
I think our principals have done an excellent job of having open dialogue, evaluating those Teacher Working Conditions Survey results, what we have control over, what we don't have control over, and then prioritizing.
Okay. Very well.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda, I'm going to recognize Todd Hagens for the next presentation.
Good evening Chairman Lutz, Vice Chairman Ramsey, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Booker. October is National Principals Month. The annual observance is sponsored by the National Association of Elementary School Principals and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. This year, we have a proclamation to present to you for consideration and approval. At this time, I would like to read the proclamation for our audience and the people watching online and on Channel 21. It's a proclamation for National Principals Month. Whereas the month of October is designated National Principals Month in recognition of all school administrators for their vision, dedication, and determination to ensure that every child receives a quality education. And whereas principals and assistant principals are responsible for leading the instructional program, acting as disciplinarians, overseeing the day-to-day operation of their school, and partnering with teachers, parents, the community, and others to achieve excellence. And whereas principals and assistant principals work diligently to establish a positive tone for their school and provide a supportive and safe school environment where students learn, grow, and thrive. And whereas we are extremely proud of the principals and assistant principals at our 54 neighborhood schools in Gaston County, and sincerely appreciate their commitment and contributions to Gaston County Schools and public education in North Carolina. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Education is pleased to join other boards of education across the United States in proclaiming October 2016 as National Principals Month, and encourages the citizens of Gaston County to thank all school administrators for their care and concern they show for our children, and also to celebrate their accomplishments of our principals and assistant principals who strive every day to inspire success and a lifetime of learning in Gaston County Schools. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes of the board adopted this the third day of October 2016. And this proclamation is presented to you for consideration and approval, and pending your approval, we have a group of principals and assistant principals with us this evening to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Hagens. I will need that in the form of a motion. Ms. Guthrie?
I believe that we accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. I need a second. I have a second for Mr. Collier. Any discussion? All in favor? And it is unanimous, Mr. Hagens.
At this time, I would like to introduce the principals and assistant principals with us to accept the proclamation from the Board of Education on behalf of all the school administrators, and I would like for them to come forward at this time. Mr. Ramsey, our vice chairman, is going to present the proclamation, but Mr. Ramsey, I would like to introduce these outstanding principals and assistant principals that we have with us, and we certainly appreciate them being with us this evening. First, we have Brian Denton. He is the principal of Cramerton Middle School and is chairman of the Principal's Leadership Team. Rebecca Huffstettler, she is principal of Stanley Middle School, past chairman of the Principal's Leadership Team, and current Gaston County Principal of the Year. Glenn Cook, principal of Pleasant Ridge Elementary School, who was named Gaston County Assistant Principal of the Year last year while at Stuart W. Kramer High School. Jessica Mellon, Assistant Principal at Lowell Elementary, and secretary for the Principal's Leadership Team. Melissa Williams, Assistant Principal at Bessemer City Middle School, and Deion Kennedy, Assistant Principal at York Chester Middle School. Mr. Ramsey.
Well, on behalf of our school board, we are proud of you. It's an honor that we get to recognize y'all in the month of October. Last meeting, we talked about all the good results our superintendent shared with us. It's y'all's guys that are really doing the work, and we appreciate that you're on the front line with the teachers and the students, and we appreciate all your work every day, just not in the month of October. We just want to thank y'all. I guess...
Brian can have him.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lutz, we'd like to let you know that a copy of the proclamation will be sent to all of the schools, and it will be displayed on our website.
Thank you, Mr. Hagens. Thank you very much. We appreciate everything you do. Great job!
How's the new school looking?
Thank you for everything you do.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. We do appreciate it.
How did you get the plaque?
He became the chair. It was Rebecca. When y'all passed the torch?
Again, I would like to thank all of our principals throughout the Gaston County school system. We appreciate everything you do. We see things that you do that you don't think we see that you do, but each and every one of you go above and beyond every day, and this board appreciates everything that you do. And thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Guthrie?
I am so proud of my two students over there, Ms. Huffstettler and Ms. from Bessemer City, Melissa Williams. Melissa was a student of mine at Lingerfield, and Ms. Huffstettler was...well, she came into the Holly Branch Library, an avid reader. So I appreciate all that you do. I know that you are a leader. You must make good decisions as well as decisions that oftentimes teachers don't want you to make. You're the nurturing mother and father and grandma and pa-pa. You want to make certain that curriculum resources are there, and you support the advocacy of your teachers. We understand your role, and we greatly appreciate all that you do every day. Thank you. Had to say that because I know what a principal is responsible for each day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. I see a lot of architects out in the audience, so I think we're going to get a construction update. I went by both job sites, and I can't tell who's ahead, but I got a good idea, so let's see what they say. I'd like to recognize Morgan at this time.
Good evening Chairman Lutz, Board Members, Superintendent Booker. It is truly good to be here with you all this evening. We are excited to bring you all an update tonight on our progress update on our schools' construction sites, two sites. We've asked both the architectural firms here to have a brief update for you all and represent and open it up for questions possibly when they are done. So we'd like to begin with our new elementary school architectural firm, Boomerang, Mr. Rick Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
See if I can get our technology going, and I'll be looking for you.
Not yet. It's getting there.
Wonderful. It's great to be here tonight. I'm really excited to share the progress at the elementary school with you folks. It's been a wonderful job. Just a brief review, as you know, we're building a school for 800 students at Pleasant Ridge Campus. One of the objectives is to bring a real new face to this school and create a new entrance, one that's inviting for 21st century learning, designed for optimum learning and security, and all those things that make for a really functioning school. The site plan, you may recall, will create a new site with a public entrance from the north side of the property at the upper part of the site, and then maintaining the lower part of the site for the bus traffic. So we will greatly improve the traffic flow around the site. It is a two-story scheme with all the major functions for the school located in the core of the facility, so great access from all the classroom areas, and then we have the two wings extending on the other side. This is really a construction report, and we're there every week. We have monthly job meetings with the contractors and subcontractors. In fact, we just had one on the 28th. And one of the things that is so encouraging about these meetings is the fact that the subs and the contractors are really asking questions that's going to happen two months, three months, four months down the road. That tells me that everybody's into it, they're all doing a great job, and things are really moving along, and that people are thinking ahead, and that's what makes for really good communication and a good job moving forward. One thing that's really impressive, if you've been by the site, you probably saw the large retaining wall. It's over 500 feet long, 15 feet tall. It's really what's going to make this project function in a site that has a lot of topography to it. And you can see that there's a lot of steel, there's a lot of concrete going in this wall. It's actually has been completing, and they're now in the process of waterproofing the wall and making it work. This is a shot of the courtyard space, so we have the two wings on either side, the right side and the left side, with this courtyard space in the middle, which will really become a really, I think, a very used space of the campus. It will have a southern exposure. Even in the colder months of the year, kids will be able to go out there, and it'll be a sheltered space. There'll be a lot of learning activities there in that courtyard space. I'm really excited to see this thing come about. One of the interesting things, as we were talking to the contractors about phasing the project, is the fact that it is a very tight site. And when you go out there in the next coming months to look around, you may see two buildings going up. Don't get scared. The fact is that they have to leave the middle part of the building open so they can move the crane in and out, so that the two sides will be constructed, and then the middle part of the building will come in at the end. But that's kind of goes to my point about everyone's thinking ahead, they're thinking down the road. How do we build this school, and how do we make things happen? So that's very, very encouraging. The walls are going up. It's always a good sign when you see concrete block going up. So here are your new classrooms in the making. Fun little sequence, it's barely hard to see, I apologize for this, but a year ago, if you were to drive along Floyd Street, you saw a bunch of trees. And it was really kind of hard to envision, how are we going to make a school work on this property? So what you can see here is, what you can kind of see here, is the heavily forested area. This spring, you saw a lot of earthwork happening, a lot of site work going on. And then beyond that, now we see the walls going up, and a school really becoming reality. And eventually, we will have a new school there in a year. I wanted to remind everyone about the website that we maintain. We post new construction pictures on the website on a regular basis, and we'd just like to remind everyone that they can go to our ThinkBoomerang/Gaston site to get an update of the project as it moves forward. So what's ahead? Well, they'll continue to work on the slabs, the concrete walls. Within the next few weeks, you'll start to see steel coming onto the site, and the construction for the second floor will begin. There's a lot of plumbing and electrical work going on, and there will continue to be so. Mechanical work will soon be moving in, and so everything's really moving forward, and I'm very excited about it. The moving goal is for the summer of 2017. And just in closing, I just want to say once again that we've had really good participation and teamwork, all folks, you know, from administration, your team here at Gaston. Everyone's working together to make this thing happen, and it's just a really rewarding experience for myself and everyone involved. So thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm sure we're going to have some questions from and forward. Mr. Collier?
Usually my question, Mr. Brown, are we under budget and on time?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to have to come up with another question because that was one of those was mine. Okay, how many tires were out there? That was the most amazing thing. I rode out there this summer, and those tires were...it looked like it was just amazing. I mean, in the state, there was some program that we use, the state helped us get rid of those.
That's very true. That is very true.
And they're all gone now.
Yes. Well, maybe not all gone, but they're in the process of getting them out of there, and you know, they've done a really outstanding job, in my opinion, of working through that site work. Because it was a challenging site. It was very challenging.
I could not believe the amount of tires that I saw, and the trash that was out there. And that had been buried there for how many years?
Who knows? Probably 50 years.
That's amazing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, we look forward to riding by and keeping up with what's going on and seeing those walls continue to go up. Thank you, Rick. We do appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rick.
It's been wonderful to work with you and Boomerang thus far. Next, we'd like to bring up architectural firm LS3P that are in charge of our new middle school project, Mr. David Bellamy and Marcus Moore.
Thank you Chairman Lutz. Thank you Vice Chairman Ramsey. Thank you Superintendent Mr. Booker and the rest of the Board of Education. We appreciate you guys making time for us, that we may give you an update of this exciting new middle school going in Stanley, North Carolina. So just to give you a quick update of the new Stanley Middle School, it's going on the site of the existing Stanley Middle School on top of the athletic fields, and we're going to phase this project, build the middle school first, demolish the existing school, and then build the athletic fields on top of the existing school, as you can see the overlapping red line here. The new middle school is a compact plan. It's a two-story with an adjacent gym... The new middle school is a compact plan, it's a two-story with an adjacent gym attached to it. The compact plan accommodates 800 students with a core capacity of 1,000. The adjacent gymnasium allows the flexibility of after-hour space so that gymnasium can be used by the community for after-hour events. The exterior of the new middle school has a stately presentation, a stately presence, uses traditional architecture that ties in the traditional nature of Stanley, North Carolina's The construction timeline, we bid this project back in April and issued an intent to ward on April 19th. Construction did not begin until the beginning part of June. July 19th, we had a groundbreaking ceremony, which was well-received by the community, and a lot of members attended. August 30th was when the Duke power line relocation began. And I mention that because if you go to the site, there are these large power lines that split the current site, and that was our major critical path issue of getting this project on schedule. Unfortunately, Duke was two months behind schedule. However, our contractor agreed to develop a phasing plan that allowed him to get access to the site with those power lines in place. Now, that did impact the schedule. We were experiencing a 12-day delay behind our original estimate, but considering Duke was two months behind, I think the contractor did a heck of a job, pardon my French, to stay on schedule as best that he could. The original completion date was July 28, 2017, and now we're tracking August 14, 2017. Here are some panorama images of the existing site before we began construction, and you can see those power lines going directly through our site. In July is when the site clearing began and the sewer line relocation. July 19th was the groundbreaking ceremony. In August, most of the site clearing was complete, and then that's when grading began to get the athletic fields up to finished floor elevations. As you can see in this image, there's a borrow pit. In order to limit the grading cost of importing dirt to the site to get the finished floor elevation higher, we decided to develop a plan that allowed us to use onsite dirt and dig a pit and fill the athletic field, and then when we demolish the existing school, we're going to push that dirt back into the hole to balance the site. So we won't have this uneven site, as you see now, at the existing Stanley Middle School up higher than athletic fields. September 13th, the power lines were in place, the new power lines, and the old ones will be down sometime this week. So we got the power line issue out of the way. This week, we will also finish pouring footings and foundations and begin work on the slab. As Principal Huffstettler mentioned, the site is going to be very exciting now that you're going to start seeing the CMU walls go up and the building come out of the dirt. And that's when the students are going to be excited. And we also asked Branch, the contractor, to allow us to have site access, so if the students would like to have a tour of the construction, and this is open to other schools in the area as well, that they are open to have tours, they're open to have a topping of steel ceremony, anything that the school board would recommend or like, they are open to negotiate, not negotiating, but coordinating those efforts.
Any questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Howell?
I got a text from somebody over the weekend, I think Saturday, that the fence was open. Do you know, was there construction going on Saturday, or anything going on Saturday, or is that maybe an oversight that that didn't get closed? Because to me, that would, just while we're in here, probably be a liability issue, I think, other than when we coordinate that. A non-coordinated event probably wouldn't be good, so... I didn't know, was there construction going on, because I didn't know how to respond to that person. There was nobody there. Let me take the picture, but...
There shouldn't have been a site access.
There should not have been a site access that we would have been aware of it, so we'll follow up with that immediately.
Awesome. Thank you.
To make sure that doesn't occur again. We understand the safety and security issues involved.
Anybody? Anybody? Mr. Collier?
We are under budget.
He answered the schedule.
Okay. Okay.
Are we under budget?
Yes. So we are under budget.
And somebody mentioned in a who's first, I think you can figure out Boomerangs ahead, we're tracking about four to five weeks or so.
Yeah. I didn't want to say that out loud, but since you did, okay.
That's so.
We...
Yeah, absolutely.
That's right. We do appreciate your due diligence, and we appreciate all the hard work that y'all have had so far, and we look forward to seeing the walls go up. Thank you very much.
Very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David and Marcus. Appreciate your update, and just want to thank board members. Thank you for your continued support on both of these projects.
Thank you. We appreciate you and your staff trying to keep up with everything. Okay. The next item on the agenda is policy updates, and I've got a couple of things that I'd just like to say. These three policies are in your board book. They... two require updates, and one is a new policy. All three of these relate to the setting clear procedures for addressing parents, students, and employee concerns. This is only for information tonight. You have copies in your board book after you read them, and they're posted online also. After everyone reads them, if we have any questions, please direct your questions to Ms. McGraw. This will be an action item on our October 17th meeting, but we wanted to get it out to you to read and see if anyone has any questions or concerns, and we can address those before that meeting time. Seeing no other questions or anything on the agenda, I'd like to recognize Mr. Collier.
If it pleased the board, make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion for adjournment. I have a second, Mr. Ramsey. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you very much.